Call the meeting to order. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. We're going to go right into the work session of the municipal development plan. You'd have to probably get a motion on it and then, or just want to go right into discussion. Okay. We're going to go right into the discussion part of the plan. So, I don't think we really want to get to go page by page. That's, I don't think we're at that level. Been thinking about this all day on what's the best approach to get that ball rolling.
Yeah, Mike, I copied for the board again, the memorandum from, from the planning commission, relative to the testimony was heard at their meeting. So, I will tell you that, you know, if it's the, if it's the city councils, if the city council would like to, in essence, talk about, or endorse, or agree, disagree with the changes put forth in the memorandum, I would suggest maybe that happen. And that way Neil and the planning commission could do whatever they need to do to make changes to the various pages of the plan, and they would do that for you. All right? I mean, I can't speak for Neil, but really, the planning commission is here work, is here working for you. So, if, when you go, maybe the first step would be to go through their memo, or actually point out if anybody can bring up anything in their memo that you either agree or disagree with, to in essence, put tho, put that item in the parking lot, if you will. And that way, this memo, this memo can be set aside, and then the board, the city council can talk about anything else in the plan that they would suggest for change prior to the city council's probable final public hearing.
Thank you. Then, I would, let's, let's bring that to, to open that to discussion. Is there anyone sitting here that has, let's start with number one. Anything they want to talk about, number one, item, their first item, their first recommendation? Randy?
This maintenance standards, I see that the, the public wanted maintenance, and the board has agreed, and it shouldn't happen. I just want to clarify that I'm in favor of no minimum maintenance or design review on any property, indivisual. I believe that we have a set of, a nice set of guidelines. I do not believe that a board of five or six should be able to enforce their, their standards onto anything.
So, you are saying contrary to what is there. You're saying they shouldn't be, and because I read it as...
Well, I think what Randy's talking about is actually something further on. Item one is really about, someone suggested that the city ought to adopt some kind of minimum maintenance standards. And what I told it, told the planning commission, that it's my understanding, and I learned this really from David, that the, that the city council researched to find out if, in fact, the city had the authority to adopt so-called minimum maintenance standards, because I think you had some properties in town that were in very bad shape. You know, yes, you can condemn them from occupancy, however, they sit there in this unoccupied and ugly state for years and years. And so, the city council sought legal advice to find out about whether or not they could, in essence, force somebody to bring their pop, property into an, into a state that it could be occupied, and that's, and the council learned, it's my understanding, the council learned that they really did not have the authority. You can force somebody to secure their property. You can force them to board it up, to make sure that's, that it's not an attractive nuisance. But you can't tell somebody to, you've got to invest in your property, and such the point that it's occupied. So, that, that's all that that one is about, is item number one. I think what Randy is referring to would be...
What item? Number two.
Number two, and possibly number, whatever the number is on the central business district, I think. I mean, if Randy's expressing an objection to any kind of design control standards, I believe those were the only two districts, correct? Correct me if I'm wrong, Neil?
Sure.
Okay. That, that those two, the historic neighborhood district and the central business district, there is certainly reference in, in there about, I'll call them, design standards. You know, relative to so-called design review, I mean, there's some communities that actually have a dis, a separate design review board. You have an ordinance where you have a design review board. There are some communities that have a, a, a design review group whereby their, their recommendations aren't binding, all right? And I, I, you know, Neil could probably speak about, or really, you know, he may not be able to give you specifics as to how design review is going to be handled, because that kind of thing really comes more in the form of, of regulations, future regulations. But, you know, this plan suggests clearly that the planning commission undertake the steps to draft regulations that would provide for some level of, of design review.
So, I don't know if you want to wait for that in particular, or wait till other folks have had a chance to, I'd be happy to chat about that in particular.
As long as we're on, then let's try to get clarification.
Sure. So, what the... I guess I have a couple, a couple comments on there. One, first and foremost, going into this process of rewriting the plan, I don't think, I don't believe that it was any of ours, any of the people on the board's idea to have design standards in the plan as we, as a finished document. I know, speaking for myself, it definitely wasn't. I wasn't anywhere near there. In fact, somebody at one point, a year and a half ago, mentioned to me, "Boy, Neil, what about design standards?" And I shot him down. I said, "You know what? I don't want to have that discussion." I will tell you that the outreach and the public input that we did brought the board to where we landed. And, and what the plan says is that we, we as a community really value, value the integrity of our central business district, and value the integrity of our, what we're referring to as the historic neighborhood district. We believe, and that the, the public input that we got was just so strong on those points. It, the public brought us to the place that we are today. This is not the board coming up with this out of the blue. So, that's the first thing I'll say. The second thing is that it, what the plan proposes is nothing in specific. The plan does not say all buildings should be white. The plan does not say all buildings should have shutters, moldings, wood siding, purple siding, pink siding, anything like that whatsoever. This board that's here recommending this plan is very much about mass, size, and scope, scale, and that sort of thing. And ultimately, the specifics on design standards will be a discussion that's held down the road in terms of looking at the development, the zoning regulations. That's a whole different process, which involves more public hearings and the city council's approval of that. It's a similar sort of process that we've gone through on the plan, but very specifically looking at the zoning regulations. Kind of to lay out what that might look like in the future, if we read through the plan, throughout the document, there are lots of policies in there, such as the planning commission should develop design standards, or the planning commission should, or the city should create the northern gateway district and have these sorts of uses in it. Those policies are all directed towards the planning commission looking at the zoning regulations in the future. It's going to be more public input, there's going to be more discussions with the city council, there's going to be us drafting proposed regulations, and more public input on those proposals, and the city council ultimately voting yes or no on them. This board is not, is not interested in regulating color, window size, window, I mean, any of that, any of that sort of thing. We're interested in maintaining the size, the mass, the scale of these buildings, maintaining the existing setbacks in the historic neighborhood district, and those sorts of things. So, that's...
I noticed that statement, I wonder if that needs to be spelled out in the document, that the board isn't, isn't interested in specific design, such as, you know, the statement you made, windows, roofs, et cetera. Is that, I mean, I don't know if that needs to be specifically spelled out or not.
My, my concern is that, I don't know, I suppose that it's both of us looking at the same, different sides of the same coin, sort of thing, which is to say that because we haven't had the discussion about what specifics are, I would be hesitant to put in lots of sort of structure around that point. And much to the same, where this particular city council, there may be folks that have a concern about putting in a broad, "Boy, we should have design review standards for this particular district." But again, we, we're not looking at that yet. And I think that, you know, my, my hope is that this city council has trust in its planning commission to look forward, knowing what we know about our community, and that when we get down to writing the design standards, that we get folks to participate in that discussion.
I mean, I'm comfortable with that. That you, that you define a broad idea, and then, you know, approach individual circumstances as they occur. Is that what, kind of what you're saying?
It's about, yeah, well, yes. Defining a broad idea, which will, which will get more specific with, with the zoning regulation down the road.
David, you got something?
As long as you're on the subject. I think, you know, to, to maybe flush it out some, some of the concern may be with regard to the, the unknown, you know, essentially, and you've, you've alluded to that. But I, I think that when I was in your position, many years ago, there was no support whatsoever for any type of design review. As, as you recall, we, you know, we even struggled with dimensional issues. I, I think that, that some of the hesitancy is probably due to the fact that it is a significant departure away from performance-based standards into something that's unknown. And, you know, I, I would really, and I, as far as the public hearings and that sort of thing, and the workshops, you know, there was the, there, I, I would agree with you, you know, there was a level of support there. On a broad sense, in the city, I, I don't see it. I, I think that, to a certain extent, there's a lot of people that really don't necessarily participate until there's something that concerns them, until they want to build a shed, or build a garage, or whatever, you know. It's just, they're oblivious. I mean, you and I've talked about it, you know, you want to have a long-term discussion, what's the future of regents? Put on a nice presentation, you've done it, and I've done it. Are there any questions? Somebody raises their hand, says, "Yeah, when can I build my shed?" And, and that's not casting any aspersions on anybody. I think that's human nature. People are interested in specifically what pertains to them. So, I think that that's where the concerns come from. And, you know, I, I have some concerns myself with regard to it. I think that, that when, you know, if we can jump ahead for just a second, and I can talk something specific.
Sure.
If, if you look at, if, if you look at section 5.2, pages 74 and 75, with regard to the historic neighborhood district. Page 75, bullet number one, cuts right to the core. The language is non-performance based, and I think it's difficult to adequately define the criteria, given the range of build-out, which exists in that district. There's a wide variety in terms of, I think that you'd, you'd create a very tenuous situation with regard to any sort of design issues because of the wide variety of, of build-out in what the proposed historic neighborhood district would encompass. And that's a, going forward, if design review were adopted, I think that that's a significant issue in terms of a hurdle to overcome. And, and bullet number three would obviously, it would, it, it would anticipate the establishment of design review. And that really cuts to the, that really cuts to the core. I think, I think it's a tough sell at this point.
Neil, go ahead.
So, I guess, what I want to say here, with regards to that first bullet, reflective historic residential character and development pattern of existing neighborhoods, including density, lock coverage, setbacks, footprint scale, mass, height, those, I actually believe are, are real meaty issues that we can put numbers to. I don't believe that that's, that's a, that's a, I, I believe that that really is a performance-based piece there, and there's nothing there that talks about, you know, windows, doors, siding, these sorts of things. It's about how do homes in that neighborhood fit in? And the city had a dimensional standard, a dimensional study done several years ago, which spells out, here's what we think this ought to be. So, that stuff is all, is all there. I think with regards to people turning out, we've had... Just to recap for the council, we had a public discussion, which was attended by 70 people. We had a survey that was filled out by about 150, which included me standing out all one Saturday morning at the cycling center, personally speaking to residents. It included me going at the strawberry festival one Monday night with the band plan, personally asking people for their input. I went door to door in this entire town and asked people for their input. We had a, we had several articles in the Addison Independent about design review standards. We had a second meeting with 35 or 40 people asking about design review standards. We had a public hearing, where it was advertised we'd be speaking about design review standards. And the folks that showed up said, "We don't want it to be about windows and sidings and this sorts of things." But they also said, "We really like the direction that this plan is taking, and we like the fact that you're supporting the density and the look and feel of, of this community." I, I really do believe the support is there for this. I really do.
Neil, you've done probably the best job... Of anybody, since I've done a lot in terms of getting people out to public meetings, certainly did a better job than I did when I was chair. I, I think you've done a good job with regard to that, just, I, I could be wrong, but my sense is, is that in the broader-based community, I just don't see the support overall.
I'm Jason Farrell, I'm part of this board as well, and I, it took me a while, as a member of the board, to kind of comprehend that, because I wanted to jump to creating guidelines for us in the plan. And what I, what I was reminded by our consultants, and what I, what I ultimately believe to be true, what Neil has said, is that, that this is a visionary document. This isn't a document that's saying, "This is what it needs to be." This is, this isn't a document that says, "This is how we should define the setbacks or the restrictions or the size and limitations of buildings in that area of town." What it says to me is that beyond what we have today, there is a need, in some people's opinion, the people that showed up, the people that participated in this process, in their opinion, that there's enough consensus that they believe there should be more than what is currently there. What that is, is to be determined at a later date. But I, I think that's where the language, as I understood it, as we were creating or trying to, we're very cognizant of the fact that there is trepidation on a number of people's parks with regard to design review standards that get away from performance standards. And, and I can tell you that what you see in front of you is a, is a really concerted effort to, to honor that. But there's also our attempt to ensure that, that the people who create the next document understand that what currently exists needs to, in the opinion of those that have participated, needs to expand, needs to at least give something else. On Water Street, there's a character in that neighborhood that is, is, in some people's opinion, destroyed when houses are set 25 feet back from the road to meet a, to meet a, a performance standard that isn't conforming to what the rest of the neighborhood looks like. On West Main Street, we just had an application that, in an effort to try and conform to the performance standards that are set there, would have created a home that might have, that did, created an appeal of an application that was passed by the zoning administrator, because it conformed to the design review, I mean, sorry, the performance review standards, but it wouldn't have fit in, in their opinion, as well as the property eventually, in, in the nature of people, the character of the neighborhood. So, these are issues that aren't just intellectually being argued, these are actually happening in applications that come before the board. So, I think there has to be a visionary document that says, "We've got an issue that's happening out there in the, in our community, and we need to address that." We don't give you real specific ways to, to address that, but just sort of the inclination that is, that is, is necessary to address that. Second.
I, I agree with you. We started, you know, we certainly struggled with the dimensional issues, and we kind of got halfway to where we needed to be with regard to providing some relief for folks. But I would agree with you, and I don't think the concern is with the dimensional issues.
And, and when you look at, you know, you know, when you look at bullet one, Neil's correct, those, those are dimensional and performance-based, and I think the hesitancy is with regard to non-specific language. You know, it's very easy to define density, it's very easy to define lock, coverage, setbacks, footprints, and I would agree with you. You know, in certain instances, the regulations that we have in place are onerous and do prevent somebody from building, you know, what obviously ought to be there. The concern is, is that when you get outside of the realm of, of how big the building is, and where it will be situated on the lot, and, and the discussion becomes like in, in bullet number, in bullet number three, "All new development and redevelopment shall uphold and respect the character-defining features and historic integrity of homes in this district." That's a lot of, lot of law there, in terms of the broadness of that language. And I understand, you know, it's a visionary document, but it, that definitely, to me, would anticipate relatively significant design review standards, and I think that that's really where the hesitancy is. Should somebody be able to build a house at the street line, you know, on South Water Street? Absolutely. Should houses be set back 30 feet from the street, so that they're effectively in the middle of the lot, with a nonusable front yard and a nonusable backyard? No. But when you get into the realm of some of these other discussions, I think that that's where some of the hesitancy is. You know, I, I certainly support, you know, the changes in terms of dimensional issues. You know, that's, that's actually, that's, that's going to be a good thing. There's some people that don't support them, you know? But again, it's, I, I think, you know, you guys have done a phenomenal job with this. I mean, it's not a, a critique of the effort or ability or anything else.
Chris?
I'm going to use my house as an example. I live in the historic neighborhood. I currently have a two-story house built in the 1800s.
Speak up.
I, I, I have no front yard. I'm right on the street. And if anything happened to my house, I would not expect to have to put a two-story house back there. I would expect that I could use my property. Most likely, I would put a single story, and I would be outside the current footprint. So, my question to you is, if that was my situation, would you tell me, "No, I could not do that"?
This document doesn't answer that question. It doesn't. It says very broadly, "We as a community have a very high value on how these homes, how that neighborhood looks." It asks the planning commission to develop some standards to help guide redevelopment in that, in that district. And those standards will be, they will be voted on by the city council down the road. And it may be that all that they are, right out, is dimensional stuff, and that's it. It may be that it's a little more. I really can't say. I, I don't know. This document reflects, reflects the opinion of the community as a whole as to what we We're going to go back to the community and ask the specific questions about what, the sort of things that you're asking right now. Jason's comment about the house on, on West Main Street is actually, it's really quite pertinent. And just to play that out, it's an old building that was dilapidated, that was abandoned. Somebody had a proposal to pull it down and put, and put a home, a colonial home on there, but it needed to be turned 90 degrees, such that the front door faced the neighbor's house. And the proposal was to put a two-car garage along Main Street. What, what our community values about that district is walking along and frankly, seeing front doors, and maybe a porch here and there, and seeing people out there tending to their gardens or what have you. That's what people value about living there. That's why the value of my house increases, is because of my next-door neighbors' value walking by that street and seeing the houses where they are and how they are. The actual details of the thing is down the road, and so I can't answer your question.
To this, you know, this is probably on the same wavelength. It's like, I've had a couple other people call me that own buildings in regents, especially in the central business district. In fact, me, one of them probably owns two-thirds of the block. But he had the same concerns, you know, about the same footage, you know, the same volume. Again, especially with these big buildings here, the insurance, like on mine, like I brought up before. I had another gentleman, too, that owns down further, and when there was a fire, that big fire we had back in the 50s, or late 50s, there was a third story. Now, there's only two stories. You know, he says, you know, there's, and that mainly was because of the insurance, again. I'm not saying that we don't want to change, and we'd like to keep things the way they are, but sometimes you can't put a burden on people if they can't maintain. You know, you have all this historical on a building, you have the fancy woodwork and things like that, you know? That is expensive. I think the people, we can't, I just don't feel like telling somebody, "If you can't, if you don't do this," or whatever, because you've had this here before, you know, when, I don't want it to get that way, that you can't put a ranch there. You know, it's just, this isn't regents. I mean, this is something that has been brought up before. I was also in the, on the board when this was brought up, the design. And I was also involved when they had, we had to get the, you know, the decision... And I was also involved when they had, we had to get the, you know, the decision from the courts. And I think that, I don't know if maybe this also, if we keep bringing this up, you know, on the design, that we may end up getting that way again sometimes. I just, looking down the road, it's just like, I feel we're opening a can of worms, to be honest with you.
Randy?
It's my understanding that when I first came on to the board, the zoning plan, the zoning rules weren't in line with the city plan. And that we had to change them and get them so that they were more in line. Now, if we change the city plan and put these type of design reviews or whatever you want to call them in place, that means that we have to then change the zoning laws to kind of parallel. Isn't that true? I'm asking for clarification on that.
Absolutely. But, well, the Northern Gateway District, I mean, just to look at it from a different subject, the Northern Gateway District in the plan, it says, "This is what we think should be out there, these are the types of uses, these are the kind," and that sort of thing. So the zoning regulations would need to be updated to reflect that, that there is a change of districts happening over there, okay? In terms of design review guidelines, the plan is silent on what that, on what a design review guideline is. And it is up to the planning commission to go out and get feedback from the community and come up with something that feels workable to the planning commission, to the community, and to this council, or whatever council is there at the time. And again, I would ask you, the planning commission that is current, the current commission, has no interest in micro-managing people's buildings. We have a much broader interest in protecting the fabric of the community.
I respect what you're saying as far as, you know, you have no desires to create these standards. But who's to say, when we set these up, who's to say your next group that comes in as the planning commission says, "Oh, no, 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 you gotta do it this way." And they have a definite desire. My feeling is that if we start down this slope, there's only one way you can go, is downhill.
I'm a glass-half-full guy.
It's just I'm looking at both sides.
Sure. I mean, the planning commission is appointed by the city council. So, you know, I would imagine that y'all are spending some time thinking about the members of the planning commission that you're appointing such that they reflect the community's views on these things. Any changes to the development, to the zoning regulations that happen, whether it be for design review standards or densities or uses or anything, all that has to go through a public process and it has to be approved by the city council. It may not be this city council, it may not, it may be another city council. And, I mean, we are in a democracy. We have to imagine that, you know, folks are going to elect people that are going to approve these things as they see fit and whatnot. So the down-the-road sort of argument doesn't, we're looking at right here, right now, and that's how I have, that's how I look at it.
Jason, did you have something you want to offer?
No, I think Neil summed it up very well. I would just add that in summation, I think that is just trusting the community. I listened to the community, we responded to the community, and the ones that show up, and I agree with David, and not everybody who has an opinion about this necessarily showed up, but those that did gave their opinion, we summarized it in the document. And going forward, I think that if we have more pointed discussions as to what it is that people specifically want in regulation, as Ziggy's, you know, asking about as well as, you know, others on the panel, on the board here, that there will be more turnout, that there will be people that'll give you a different feedback. And I think that's a worthy discussion to have. I think that we have to trust the community members that showed up this time and I think that we represented them fairly well.
David?
I do have some very specific concerns with regard to the Central Business District. Chief among them is on page 80. Page 80. Bullet number four, the requirement for multi-story buildings. I would agree that that certainly maximizes developable space and it encourages a diversity of use. It unfortunately also creates a significant adverse financial burden, and I'll explain how that occurs. I own the building that the Black Sheep Bistro is located in. We redeveloped that building. We spent more money to redevelop the property than I paid for it. I did it without tax credits, federal loans, state loans, none of that was involved. I can't insure an asset that I don't own. The building is currently a one-story building. I'm not sure what it's insured for. But if that building were to burn and the requirement for me to rebuild that building is a two-story structure, I'm not going to do it. There's going to be a vacant lot there because I have a family, I have three kids, and I won't make that level of investment for something that's essentially a negative return. To put that building, to rebuild that building as a two-story building is probably close to three-quarters of a million dollars by the time you're done, if I could build it, if I could build it. Because I'm not only dealing with regulations here, I'm dealing with regulations at the state level with regard to labor and industry. And to rebuild that building, I would have to meet all of the current requirements as far as ADA accessibility, virtually impossible to do, given the lot size and the footprint of that property. And...
David, have you got much more because we're, I'm going to have to close.
Just one more thing is that with regard to bullet number two, design review standards, very quickly, when I purchased the property, there were no design standards in place. There was no shortage of people that felt compelled to offer advice in terms of how the building should look, what color it should be, so on and so forth. And I actually got a significant level of aggravation from certain individuals that the patio, which I paid for out of my own pocket, again, no tax credits, no low-interest loans, no nothing, did not match the footprint, did not match the design of the basin block, for instance, in terms of being brick and concrete. Patio that's there, Kevin Sullivan put in, it's pant and stone, it'll be there long after all of us are dead. The other pieces around town, cement's starting to come apart, bricks are starting to fall. So it's cautionary tale in terms of, you know, sometime, plenty of people would have preferred me to put in brick and concrete and I'd probably be looking at doing it again in two years.
Neil, I'll let you respond, then I'll bring closer.
Based on the testimony that's provided for the city council's public hearing, I spoke with our consultant Natalie, I have not spoken with the board as a whole about it, Natalie, down at Land Works. And it was not the intention of the board, I mean, I would say that there are two buildings in the Central Business District that are single-story, which is to say, your building and the realtor's office there in the corner of McDonough Drive and Main Street. And it certainly was not the intention of the board to exclude those. And my personal recommendation, again, not coming from the board, my personal recommendation is to just to change that multiple-story buildings are strongly encouraged in the Central Business District instead of required. I mean, frankly, from a, I think that is a fair and reasonable thing to do. I believe that having multiple-story buildings in the downtown, I think that helps our downtown businesses in terms of density. I think it helps our tax base in terms of having better, you know, more expensive buildings downtown, frankly. And I think that the look and feel of it very much is what brings people into our communities in terms of folks who want to live here or people that want to dine here or buy shoes here or what have you. And, you know, again, our survey, 92% of respondents either wanted or strongly wanted design review standards in the Central Business District. I want you to, I want you to hear me, this did not come from the board sitting around going, "What can we do downtown?" This came from the community, this came from Virgens residents.
We have to bring this part of the session to closure because we've got to get on with our council meeting. We have other business that we're going to deal with and we're not going to resolve everything in this book tonight. But I do want to remind, this did go through a process, a very serious and lengthy process with a lot of input from the citizens. So I don't want to rewrite something that's already been written. If there's some issues here, I really feel that they should have come to the surface prior to now and we're just here to do the fine tuning and I don't know if we're getting a little bit in depth here. So, not trying to stifle anybody, but let's get our act together because this is going to come back to the board and I want to move it forward in some form or manner or reject it at the next meeting, which will be August 25th. We'll have a workshop and we probably better allow more time. Either we'll back off the starting time of the meeting and give more time on the plan itself.
Yeah, I can tell you that our current plan expires on September 28th of this year. And if a plan isn't adopted by, unless some plan is adopted by that date, you're going to be without a plan, all right? And what that means is that, you know, obviously, one of the things that it means is you can't make any changes to the zoning regulations unless you have an adopted plan. Number two, if there is a development that is applied for that's subject to Act 250, when a community doesn't have a plan, then therefore your plan has no standing in that process. So, you know, given the fact that the city council has to have at least one more, one more public hearing, it seems to me that what I would suggest is that if members of the city council have some specific language that they would like to see written, and I, I'm just fearful that if we, if we just speak in general terms and nobody puts a pen to paper, you're going to have a hard time getting there. I mean, I think you need to, you know, like if David refers to this bullet, this bullet, this bullet, I think that's fine, but I'm going to say, "David, bring language back to this bullet, this bullet, and this bullet." And likewise with the rest of you, you know, really, at this point, you know, just general discussion, I'm going to tell you, you're going to be, you're going to be without a plan for a long time, all right? So it'd be nice if you could just focus in on what hopefully is just a few items in here that you can either agree to disagree and get this to a public hearing. You know, the original plan here was to make sure that the community was not ever without a plan, all right? And therefore, you know, a public hearing needs to be held on or before September 28th. There's a 15-day notice requirement. So, you know, as long as everybody, as long as everybody is extremely focused on the 25th, I think that we're fine, all right? However, if it's just general discussion, you know, I can tell you, it'll be, you'll be dealing with this thing for months, just like what happened a few years ago with the zoning regulations that, you know, it just got all tangled up to the point that you had a really, a document that didn't work. I think everybody in here would agree that it has been way too many hours, many public meetings, lots of participation, surveys, you know, I would hope that if we can focus in on those few points and, like I say, agree to disagree and get this to a public hearing.
There is, yeah, that is a good point, Mel. We need to. But one thing we don't want to forget is those items that were testified in at the last public hearing, those need to be brought into consideration at some point.
And I'm obviously not saying, you know, "Let's hurry up and vote and approve something that you don't like." I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is, you know, either members of this board need to come up with language or this board needs to make some very specific requests of the planning commission so that they can, they can help you with the language.
David?
I actually, I do have specific revisions. I can get it to Joan, it's handwritten, nobody can read my writing, but I can get it typed up, I get it to Joan tomorrow and you can send it around to everybody. Not that everybody has to agree with me, but I have put pen to paper.
Okay. Well, that'll be good. Should that be also shared with the planning commission or with Neil?
Sure.
Yeah? We'll get it out to Neil and his people so they have an opportunity to look at it as well. Okay? All right. Thank you, everybody, for that part. We'll close that and go right into the council meeting itself. Now, just for the newcomers, we have a process in hand here, so we normally go through public comment, that's the opportunity for the public to comment on any particular issues. Some people may already be on the agenda, so if you haven't seen the agenda, well, sorry about that. But I think I recognize some faces and I know that some of the people are here for. So I'll open it up for public comment. I don't know the gentleman in the red shirt, anything you'd like to offer? Okay, welcome. Neil, you usually, anything else you'd like to offer as far as you usually throw yours?
I guess the only other thing I would mention is that, just to let you know that there are more planning grants on the horizon. And in kind of talking about this and looking into the future, I mentioned a few months ago that we would be interested in following up with another grant in terms of looking at the regulations and how they reflect the plan.
You know what the percentages are, actually?
Excuse me?
Know what the percentages are?
The percentages?
Yeah, it's actually, this, the planning grant is 100, well, it's about, there is a maximum, Michael, the planning grant that we received to write this plan was a $15,000 grant, which we used $14,992. Couldn't find a place to spend another eight bucks. But anyway, that is the maximum, that's the maximum grant award to a single municipality. That program does provide for a $25,000 grant if it's a multi-town application. So there is no match, provided that you can do the project within the constraints of your grant award.
Which is in terms of the timing of plan approvals and adopted and approval by regional planning and these kind of things that we're going to try our best to work out. But I would just mention that there may well be a grant application on your desk in the future, looking for your approval to do that. Just know that that's hanging out there. Thanks.
Thank you. No one else for public comment? Going to roll right along and the warrants went around and signed. Mel, anything on, any questions on Mel with the budget?
One of the things that we haven't done, I remember talking about this before, we haven't taken the time to sort out our property tax thing, Joan. Obviously, it's still showing the total billing on there and it hasn't netted out the school and school tax payment. So we'll get that, we'll get that line item squared away for you. Obviously, we're only a month and a half into the, into the year. I will tell you that one light item that'll jump out at you is we're going to have to do a little bit of shifting and it dealt with the line item dealing with stormwater handling, culverts and whatever. We actually got into a fair amount more of a project than what we originally thought we had at hand in dealing with Thomas Circle and that whole stormwater system that, you know, goes with two large pipes over onto the land for property. And we actually, when we got in to fix a couple of catch basins, there was a pipe that was just totally rotted out in the bottom. And so obviously, to rebuild two catch basins with a bad pipe in between doesn't make any sense. So that project scope actually got a fair amount larger than what we had originally thought we were involved with. And so that line item will obviously go over and we will offset that by not doing as much paving or that type of thing to make sure that the department as a whole is not... as a whole is not in any trouble, but you're, that one's going to jump off the page this early in the year. So, it really was, you know, my responsibility for trying to make sure that I had a better handle on the scope of what was needed over at Thomas Circle. You know, that was the area I mentioned before, that we kind of missed out on, on the stormwater orphan grants, you know, I was able to pull some money to take care of Sunset Drive, but I was not able to, to turn the clock back on the money for Thomas Circle, and any of the stormwater system related to that development. So, we're, we're doing some of the work in-house by Public Works employees, and some of it is contracted labor.
Okay. Any questions of Mel at this time? If not, I'm going to jump back just a little bit, something I, I meant to do, so we don't tie these people up. It is, we'd like to offer our thanks to the Derby people that are here tonight, I'm going to read everybody's names, so that I don't miss anybody, and I know some that aren't present. Of course, Lowell was the alderman assisting them, we have Nancy Perkins, Sharon, Bessie Paquin Sullivan, Martha Sullivan DeGraff, Michelle Sullivan Eastman, Stacy Quinale Paquin, and Sarah Rivers Phillips, who is not here. We also had an individual, Kim Ross, who assisted on the committee, and our, our little way of thanking you is, we're going to give you tickets for yourself and a companion to the Virgin's Day Dinner. We would like to say thank you. So, we'll see that those get to you, Michelle will take charge of that. And there's one other thing at hand, we understand that somebody wants to get the ball rolling for next year, because some of the statistics, in case you hadn't heard, there was almost 300 people signed up, children, under 15, and they raised over $7,000 towards prizes, and if they can do that in the short time they have, just think if we give them a head start on next year. So, would you ladies be interested in serving another year?
Somebody move that.
I don't make that motion. Take it long in that capacity.
All right, Chris made a motion, Lowell seconded it. We won't ask for any discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we won't ask for that either. Thank you. And, thank you for coming out tonight. Oops, excuse me, yes, I had them right in order, and I was going to do that. All right, I'm going to ask for one motion for the Virgin City Council Meeting's public hearing for July 21st, that was on a municipal plan, for the regular meeting, Virgin City Council Meeting on the 21st, and the Virgin City Council Emergency Meeting on July 27th, so.
I don't make a motion.
Chris?
I second it.
Made the motion, Ziggy seconded it, opening it for discussion, omission or errors?
I got one problem.
Did you spell your name again?
No, I wasn't available for that meeting, so I cannot...
Okay, you can abstain, we've still got enough time.
He can abstain as it relates to that meeting.
Any other discussion, corrections, errors, omissions? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And one abstention.
And one abstention for that emergency meeting.
As it pertains to that meeting, Joan.
Okay.
As it, he abstains as it pertains to the emergency meeting that he wasn't able to attend.
Okay, now we'll go to committee meetings. Lowell, you going to serve another year on, as fishing?
At least until March reelection.
At least until March, all right? We'll assign you till March, how's that? Joe, anything to report?
I'm reporting.
Okay. Ziggy, any word from surrounding towns?
No. Oh, excuse me, yes, Rick has approached me and wanted to know when we were ready to get together with his town, he was talking to the DuBoys about paving for roads for next year, about, that was brought up to the Cracker Barrel, about, you know, getting together all the towns, and...
I was going to say, who Rick is?
Rick, which year, from Panton?
Oh, okay.
Okay, and he was talking to, I think it's DuBoys, and they thought it was a pretty good idea, you know, to be able to do that, it would be cheaper.
Gary DuBoys, DNF, that's the committee, I don't get it.
Yeah, so he just put a bug in my ears, so I told him I'd bring it in front of you guys.
I wonder how we can head that, pull that together, can you ask Carol to make time? But at least get around to the different, see if there's anybody else that wants to jump on the bandwagon?
Sure.
See if we can get a...
I know Panton has, but that's...
Panton, but, that's what I said, but there's Fersberg, and I don't know about what Waltham's budget's looking like, but, okay, no, that's good, thank you.
Nothing to report?
Nothing to report.
I trying, have tried to get ahold of Tim Hodgson, who with Lowell and I had expressed interest in working on the basin project with regard to the possibility of expanding dockage down there, and you and I had spoken about the availability of some grant funds. Tim's on vacation this week, but he'll be back most likely early part of the coming week, but I was thinking Lowell and I maybe ought to get together with Mel prior to that.
And there is something in there about the planning, some of the planning commission?
Yeah, there, there is a reference in this about, because as, as many of you know, there was, there was a time when we had a designated Otter Creek Basin Committee, which was active, and then inactive, and active, and inactive, and I think everyone agrees that the basin area is, is really an important area, and deserves, deserves attention, and what is included in, in the municipal development plan in the appendix session is reference to the Otter Creek Basin Committee, and that it would actually come under the planning commission, would actually either be the planning commission, or a subcommittee, I think Neil, is the way that it's written, or a subset of that. So, you know, one of the things, obviously, the, the grant that David is referring to is a new program, the deadline is, is September 25th, I really don't know how much total money is available, it's got to be some stimulus money, they must have earmarked some of the stimulus money for Fish and Wildlife, but anyway, the maximum application, maximum grant is $95,000. So, I guess what I would suggest, Neil, that at Monday's meeting, maybe at least one person or two from the planning commission ought to join, you know, Lowell and you, to at least get our heads together to find out what, you know, how, how we might propose, what improvements, you know, would we look at? So, you know, we would need to do that very early here, I mean, September 25th is, is coming real quick, and, and Mike and I have talked about it, we really, we, we should not miss out on, on whatever we want to do down there. You know, one of the things, you know, that I thought of that we should talk about, and whether or not this is a possibility, we thought about whether or not the two pieces of land down there that we currently lease, there was some discussion about whether or not we should own it, I don't know if the property owners down there would look to sell, but it's possible that these dollars could be used for that purchase. Also, these dollars could be used for any other waterfront infrastructure, be it floating docks. I will, I will tell you, when I looked through the proposal, it appeared to me that the items that they were suggesting in the list did not, they weren't like stream alteration permits, and Army Corps permits, it was things like floating docks, certain facilities that wouldn't require a tremendous amount of permitting, I, I can tell you from, from my own experience, when the city got the grant for the Virgin's Falls Park, the grant, getting the grant was pretty easy, getting the permit to build the dock was not easy, you know, it took us about two years to get a permit from the Army Corps of Engineers, so I think that the scope of the work down there needs to be probably less intense than, than like building a new dock, or driving pylons down there, so, but, you know, I, like I say, I think we should get our heads together here, here very, very quickly, so that we can put a narrative together, and I, I got to believe that we'd be quite competitive given our, given our facility here.
Well, the economy, the way it has been, I'm very surprised to see the number of boats that have come in. I've had phone calls from my brother, and there's hardly a night that goes by that there isn't a boat tied to his dock, his private dock, that people will come in, and I may have said this before, but they're, they have a website up in Montreal, and his name is on it, that if you get caught short, you can always pull on a mast stock, so that's a good advertisement for our, our city, does a lot for us, plus he does a lot for the land to, to keep it molded and trimmed, and looking very, very neat in that area down there, so that's, that's very nice. But he does that, and he's also keeping track of how many boats come in each day counts, and I will try to get those numbers somewhere near the end of the season, so that we can get an idea of what we're seeing. I know that my mother used to do it, and it was, used to be three, anywhere from three to 400 boats per year, so, and in recent years, it's dropped back a little bit.
I wonder if it would be appropriate for me to say, just make a comment that I'm down in the basin area quite frequently, and I have counted cars in excess of 25, the parking is almost insufficient at this time, and it's grown especially since last October, and since the basin bashed this year, it really is a valuable, and could be a more valuable resource, and it's a place where many people are coming and bringing their families, besides the boats that come in, and those people, I see them walking up street, and then coming back laden with bags, so it is, if you, I'm sure you're all convinced, but I, I certainly can attest to the fact that it is a very valuable resource.
Yeah, we need, when we, when we think about adding the docks, we need to think both sides of the rivers, because as I said, as Cecile said, it's big, big effect on our economy downtown.
There was a whole thing last week, we still had three stories that I must have taken up about. Quite a bit of space there.
That, that was the one, that was the...
No, this one wasn't a tour boat.
Carol, Carol, I think it's down to me.
They do, well, this wasn't a tour boat.
It wasn't?
No.
I know that I went on one, that was over, was over 500,000 last week.
Really good.
I get invited on, and then, so, envious, we said we've offered to go on with them, but they said they just don't have room, so, okay, very good, so that'll move forward. So, Chris?
I have nothing.
Okay. I know that young lady wanted to have the wagon for, to build a sign to do the farmer's market, but they get the French Heritage Day sign on it, and, not French Heritage, Virgin's Day sign on it, I don't know if we'll get anything done this year, but maybe we ought to figure out something for year to come, next year to come, okay? We'll move on to item number five, old business, and item A.
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go through A, B, and C here, Mike, obviously, no change on the Development Review Board, as I mentioned last time, and in my cover memo, that we need to respond to a summary judgment by September 1st, so that'll be taken care of by Runcy. Relative to B, I'll, I'll try to get in touch with my sister-in-law to get a, get an absolute clarification as to the desires of the graded school district, I do have her budget information, I haven't had time to ship that off to, to the League of Cities and Towns, to find out what, what it would cost for the city to ensure that operation, I know that's not the only issue, but as I mentioned last time, the, the thought of a, of a nonprofit organization running the pool, and having that come under the city's umbrella is, is not an option, so I just need to get a clarification from the graded school district as to, you know, whether or not the, indeed, which direction they want to go, because I think that originally we were looking at kind of a hybrid deal, where there would be a nonprofit, but it would come under our umbrella, and that's, that's not going to happen. Relative to C, the only thing, this is the item that Christine and I have been, we're pen pals basically on, on item 5C here, and their board actually meets next Tuesday, I think it is. You know, we're, we're getting close, I, I think if, if both, if both, both sides really want to find the middle, we'll, we'll accomplish this, but we'll just see how they respond next, next Tuesday. And D is, is yours, Michael?
Okay, and actually, before we go to D, I really need to go down, and we need to talk about, under new business, 7C, discuss city green special usage and park management policy. We really should...
I actually wasn't sure, you know, how many members of the board were aware of this policy, it's, it's actually a policy that was originally written back when, when Dick Adams was, was mayor, I believe, right, Joan? And I, and I think what, what the original policy was about was to make sure that we didn't have two church groups fighting over, fighting over who could put their table up in the park, and so, I don't know that we ever did actually have a fight, but maybe we, we thought that one was coming, where, I think what happened is one of the, there used to be this understanding amongst the church groups, that one group had the, you know, the third Thursday of the month, and another church had the second Wednesday of the month, and whatever, and anyway, somewhere along the way, we had, we had too many, too many pie sales going on at the same time in the park, so we thought, listen, let's have, let's, let's stop this, and actually have people schedule, schedule time, and so this policy was written really about when nonprofits could, you know, the, the process that they need to go through to set up their, their fundraisers, and also dealing with how events like, even our own events, how Virgin's Day, the Strawberry Festival, the, there's a family park thing that happens anyway, that's what this policy was about, and as you can see, you know, the way the policy was written, it was really about nonprofits using the park, all right? Now, obviously, subsequently, you know, the board has approved, did approve at one point Sharon with her hot dog cart clearly on the park, and of course, the farmer's market, of which, you know, the farmer's market itself, you know, you know, is certainly not a for-profit enterprise, I mean, they take in some fees and they spend the money, however, you know, the people that are, that, that are a part of the farmer's market obviously are for-profit. So what I wanted to do was just alert you to this policy as it relates to the application of, of the snow to go, as to, you know, you know, how the city council feels about so-called for-profits in the park, because that, that actually is a departure, except for the farmer's market, from the past. So, if it's something, if this is something that you would, would entertain, and I'm not suggesting that you hold off making decisions here, but it's, it's good for us, you know, Joan and, Joan and me, for us to have, have clear, clear policies that we can hand to people, so that there's no confusion as to what, what is or, or isn't allowed in the park.
I almost think that at one time David was going to sit down with, I don't know, who it was?
Randy.
And, and write something.
You did write something?
No, we didn't write it, but I, I asked Mel for help, Mel and I have been...
Okay, so, it's moving, but it's a...
I, I think we can certainly do that, but I still think there needs to be some kind of policy as to what the city council allows, because I think what we were working on was really more about procedure, about how is an application complete, because one of the things, no different than tonight, you know, folks are back here second night, and that's because, you know, their application on the front end wasn't clear, so we wanted to, you know, make sure that, that you here received a complete application, so that you could, you could pass judgment.
David?
Yeah, to kind of reiterate what Mel said, I mean, basically, the three of us went and looked specifically at an app, at another application for a hot dog cart, and, and in addition, we had amongst the three of us a discussion with regard to usage, as it currently is, and any potential future usage in that park. Mel is absolutely correct, you know, before we do anything, we need to have a broad and general discussion with regard to what is the intent with regard to that park, and the, the discussion needs to also include impacts, you know, whether it's physical impacts to the park or otherwise. We've had a discussion, Mel and I have talked about it, Randy and I have talked about it, Ziggy and I have talked about it. I'd be interested in terms of the rest of the board, you know, what their perceptions are with regard to, A, what is the purpose of that park? Is it there for commercial activity? Is it there for the quiet enjoyment of residents and visitors to the city of Virgin's? Is it some combination? Or is it some combination of the two? Um, and, and I think that when we have that discussion, it, it will make it a lot less of a nebulous process for folks that come in and apply, um, whether it's, uh, permits like this or zoning applications, or whatever it is, you know. People generally like a clearly delineated process, and we don't have one.
And we probably won't get there tonight, but I do think that we owe these people an answer, uh, so we can move forward. Um, that doesn't resolve the thing at hand, uh, of coming to some conclusion as to what we want there. Um, I'm trying to think what would be the best way to move that part forward, but yet still, uh, make some sort of a decision on this, this, uh, application here for a vendor's license. Uh, Chris?
I think the perfect spot for her is down by the swimming pool. That's where I think she should be.
I don't know if we, we, we don't own that property.
Yeah, with the, if they were to set up at the swimming pool, they don't need to give a permit from us. It's, it's on their property.
And, and that, um, and, and that's one of the discussions that we've, we've had, um, is that, you know, and, and that may ultimately be the, um, the best way around this, because there is some concern with regard to that, with, with regard to that facility, which is essentially city property. You know, is the city of Virgin's in, 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 um, in the business of leasing out the park, essentially, is, is what we're doing, you know, for a fee of a hundred dollars. And, and the concern isn't necessarily at this point, you know, that there's an existing business selling shave ice. Um, the concern is, is that at some point, you know, there might be someone that sets up there that might like to sell pizza. And we have Luigi's Pizza, and we have Hungry Bear, um, and we have those two facilities that in one instance, the individual operating the business owns the facility and, and, and pays property taxes based on the fact that the building exists here, and he's in business twelve months of the year. In the case of Luigi's, they're a tenant, not necessarily directly paying taxes, but they are through rent. That's one of the concerns of, of some of the business owners, not specifically with this application or any other application that we've had. Um, but an easy resolution is, is that, that we restrict commercial activity with regard to that part of the city. Um, there's nothing that precludes anyone from, uh, having a, a business on private property. We don't have any jurisdiction over it. As an example, Scott LaFave, you know, he's had several people out at his facility. Doesn't matter a, a, at all to the council, we don't have to be concerned about it. Um, but I know that in speaking with, with some folks in the business community and some residents, there's some concern. Is it an issue to have a hot dog cart? Is it an issue to have the farmer's market? Would it be an issue to have, um, a business selling shave ice? Probably not. Is it an issue if the park turns into a three-ring circus? That's a significant concern, you know. It's, it's ultimately, you know, I had a couple of folks, older residents in the community, you know, that, that did have an issue with any commercial activity in that park because of the significance of it in the monuments that are there. Monument to Commodore McDonough, monument to the armed forces, folks that served in the city of Virgin's. At least a couple of those folks had some concern that it was a place for quiet reflection and not commerce. So, there's a wide variety of opinion with regard to what that facility is essentially, and I don't think we have a handle on it.
I agree that we don't have a handle on it, but I agree, I also think we need to move forward and make a decision on this application. Like I said, we're not going to take and bring closure to that other part. We, we can't keep sending people away, and, and, and either we vote it in or vote it out. I, I'm not trying to push it either way, okay? Um, I, I have a totally different view as far as what activities in the park draw people into our city, and hopefully, they then go to other, other businesses. Maybe they do, maybe they don't, but again, it's, it's, it's sending the message out to the, the public of what kind of a community we are, whether it be you sit in a park and reflect, or you sit in the park and enjoy a, a beverage, a hot dog, or whatever it is, but, um, or even a band concert. So, um, I, I think that you, you can look at it, like Neil said, I think the glass is half-full, if not slightly more full.
Fill it up.
With the right stuff, right? So, um, I ask for a motion on this.
Make a motion to the application.
We have a motion and a second. We'll open up for further discussion. Randy?
There was a question about power. Are you self-contained with power, or do you need power from?
We, we have a question. I, I probably went into more detail than you needed in, in that letter, uh, to say that we can do either way. It is probably most optimal to have a power source, but we can be absolutely self-contained without a power source, definitely.
If the council were to approve it, I'll take her up on, on a doubling of the electric. It's just my nature.
I need to make an additional comment. I did speak with your clerk a little year, several days ago, and I had a document to append about that. She said, oh, just make the comment. I also, uh, we feel very strongly about being community-minded in this. And so, I did also want to say, while inevitably, as a small family business, there has to be a nonprofit to begin to make back the capital investment, this is part of an education process for the younger members here as well. Uh, we do dedicate a portion of any profits to local nonprofit organizations, and we've identified two so far. The first is the Lake Champlain Restoration Association. The second is Camp for Kids with Cancer that's here in Vermont, and has lost its property and is fundraising now. So, I just wanted to say, it is, while it is not a nonprofit organization because, uh, people have been saving for some time to make this small venture possible, we do feel very strongly about giving back in that sense to the community. So, there would definitely be a substantial portion of proceeds dedicated to that, and we would have something indicating that to people so that there is a sense of, of non-pure commerce for what that's worth.
Thank you. Uh, Randy?
So, you can have your own self-contained power. I don't know, now, you said that the, they can tap in if we.
There's outlets out there. I mean, the, the, it's really about, you know, coordination. I mean, she's offered to pay, but it's, it's no different than, than Ed Gebo. Not that I have that totally squared away, but the council was fine with Ed using electricity as long as he paid for electricity. We have a math problem, you know, as long as, you know, as long as, as I don't have to, you know, pay an employee to go up and clip the switch and all this type of thing. It may, it may be just simpler for them to just use their self-contained. They have marine batteries, and as you said, in here and there, I mean, that's an option, all right? But, you know, if it's, if it's simple, if it can be very, very simply done without any silly labor or anything to just plug it in, you know, it's okay. But it, it may, it may in this case be more difficult to plug in than to be self-contained just because of the nature of the circuit box, and, you know, so we said, because it's in the off position. It's under lock and key, you know, so it's, it's not that simple. Jason, yeah?
Jason?
Yeah, but self-contained power means marine battery, not generated.
No, right.
No, no, it's just a marine battery. It's only, the, the only piece of equipment that's involved here is a shaver, a small vertical. And there's just a cord that goes right down inside the park invisibly to a marine battery. That is the sole power source, when we're self-contained.
Thank you.
The last thing I would say is that, um, that I, I think it's unfortunate that, that we don't have a good handle on the document, but as I read this document, it doesn't anticipate non, nonprofit. It, 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 it does not anticipate commercial use of that facility. And, and I don't particularly have a problem with this application or any of the other applications, but what I do have a problem with is when we have a particular policy that, that, that we basically don't observe.
And, and that's why we're going to, my second half, after we move on this, you're going to be the chair to take and correct the document.
Randy was the chair, I'm certainly happy to be the chair.
Okay, whatever, you'll co-chair, but it'll get resolved.
But, but my point is, is this, and, and, um, you know, unfortunately, I'll, I'll, if, you know, not to influence anyone, but I'll have to vote against it, given that, um, that we don't have a, a good document in place. Um, the other thing is, is I don't want anybody to think that we're deluding our, I, I don't want us to be deluding ourselves by thinking that in some way, shape, or form, the commercial activity that occurs in the city green is in some way, shape, or form economic development in the city of Virgin's. Um, and, and that's not speaking negatively of this proposal or any other proposal there, but I, and, and, but, but it is not. It, if, if anything, it's revenue neutral. It's, it's not economic development to use a, a, a city facility to have a farmer's market or, uh, hot dog sales or anything else, and that's just my opinion.
Any other discussion? Chris?
Um, I just have a question, actually, i- if we go through with this in the hot dog stand with regards to Virgin's Day.
We've already gone through the hot dog, hot dog stand.
No, but I mean, do they, I mean, just because we allow them a spot now on Virgin's Day, does that automatically give them a free spot on the park? Why all the other vendors are paying for the spot? That's my question.
It has not in the past, but the, um.
It would have to make arrangements through Mark Reed?
The farmer's market, I guess they get a, a deal, they buy two spots for the farmer's market, but all the vendors have to buy a spot if they want to be there for Jen's.
Yeah, and whether or not that's, I don't know if it's written on their permit or not, but I, I think when, when, when Ray or anybody comes, you know, Joan certainly explains that to them, that, that for instance, at Memorial Day.
There's certain days they can't use the green.
On Virgin's Day, in essence, the city of Virgin's, Mark Reed is actually who's doing it, is running the park. French Heritage, Strawberry Festival. Now, the, the point is, is that, that the hot dog cart, if the hot, what happens is, if, let's say that you have the Strawberry Festival, the peddler's permit does not, uh, didn't that include, or, and doesn't, it doesn't include that day. Now, if the hot dog cart person goes to the Strawberry Festival people and say, are you okay with me? And if the Strawberry Festival says, okay, we're okay too. It's just that, it's about whoever the, the event sponsor, it's really up to the event sponsor.
And I don't know that green. Where that document that's going to be upgraded, updated, should clarify that.
Right.
Give total clarification.
Based on the way the vote goes, I don't have any problem at all. I mean, I can, you know, I can craft a document that supports the vote.
Okay, call it to a vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
Oh, should I put a proviso that they be on self-contained power?
I, I, we're.
Hold on, an application, an application.
They've specified, she's already made it very clear, they're going to work with Mel, so. I, I think it's, yeah, they can do that. They don't have a key to the lock box, so. Okay, very good, thank you for your patience. I have one quick question to Mel.
Yeah, sure.
Uh, we'll go to city managers' report.
Sure, uh, just a few quick items. Uh, uh, I actually, we have scheduled a hearing, a disciplinary hearing for Chief Lowe for, uh, for August eighteenth at seven o'clock. The notice of charges went to Mike's lawyer on Monday, and so therefore, the, the minimum seven-day requirement has been met. So, just mark your, mark your calendars. Uh, Joan, you'll need to prepare a notice, uh, of a, of a special meeting or whatever you need to do there. Obviously, that meeting will be held in executive session, and it will be at that time that.
Unless otherwise requested.
That's what we think. We think that the officer may have the op, may have the option, but I'm not one-hundred percent sure of that. But, uh, I, I have heard where, where sometimes it is up to the, it's the officer's right to, uh.
Ask for a public.
To ask for a public, so, but anyway, we'll, uh, I think Mike is letting you know that, obviously, in this instance, the, you know, Jim Runsey, the firm, is representing me. Uh, Michael has, and I think everybody knows, that, uh, that you, you folks are represented by Steve Stitzel. So, relative to those kinds of questions, uh, you know, Mike, Mike's the conduit with, with Steve. So, uh, if any of you have any questions about process, you really should go to Mike. Mike will square that, Mike will, uh, get that information, uh, for you through your council. It's just, it's just how, how it works. Okay?
Time of the meeting, please.
It's at seven o'clock. It'll be in my office.
I will just make one simple statement, that we are following due process, and everything that we are doing, we will not violate anybody's rights in any way, shape, or manner.
For the, for the record, I will obviously recuse myself with regard to that proceeding.
Okay, uh, just some quick items. Uh, we talked about the waterfront grant, so no more on that. Uh, delinquent taxes, I can tell you that we're actually, we are in better shape today than we were, uh, compared to last year at the sixty-day point, you know, and it's, last year, we, we left about thirty thousand dollars of delinquent taxes and seven thousand dollars' worth of interest and penalty when we got to day sixty. We are already below that number, uh, in, in delinquents. Uh, and I anticipate, you know, I really wish that we were in a little better shape, but there was a letter that I sent out back in the middle of June encouraging people to pay by, uh, to get caught up by the first installment, which is due, uh, this coming Saturday. So, uh, so obviously, that's good news. It's, it's always good to have delinquents going, uh, lower than the previous year. It's, uh, that in essence provides better cash position for us. Uh, another note, I, I just want to let you know, I attended a, uh, Randy was there as well. Randy and I were at a Virgin's partnership meeting. Uh, they had, uh, Eileen, I can't pronounce.
Tingay.
Yeah, Eileen Tingay, Tingay, her first name is I.
Wasn't Eileen, it's, uh, Leanne, Lynette.
Leanne, Leanne, I'm sorry, Leanne Tingay was there. She's the state guru, downtown guru. She's assisting the Virgin's partnership as they develop their work plan, and she, she's, I think she's a talented person. And what she's really good at is making sure that people, uh, don't bite off more than they could ever chew. Uh, you know, one of the things that happens to downtowns is they end up with this list of so many things, uh, they don't get started on any. So, she really encourages to work on things that you can accomplish within three to six months. So, she was really, and that's not to say that you throw away ideas that are good ideas, but you really need to be good about putting ideas in the parking lot and, and focusing on things, you know, the, uh, the, what she calls the low-lying fruit. So, I wasn't, uh, I think I did stay to the end of the meeting, Randy, tell you the truth, as, as it turned out. Uh, so anyway, I just want to let you know that that, that that group is really up and running and active. It's got some structure, uh, and with Jackson Evans, uh, providing administrative help, uh, to the board, you know, I, I see, uh, I, I see the organization really being of some benefit, uh, here. I think it was, it was a really good meeting, so, uh, and I, I know they have another meeting scheduled another month.
On, on that note, Mel, do you, or can you share anything about what might be happening in the old laundromat? I see them in tearing a bunch of stuff out, or David, mate, you have some knowledge?
Peter has an intern this summer, and, uh, he's undertaken that as a project to, uh, remove the, um, items that were associated with the previous use and, in an attempt to get the, uh, the space tenable.
Very good. And, uh, I don't know if anybody's leaking out a word that we might have a gym here in the city.
I heard about that, yeah, as a matter of fact.
I heard some more information today, but I, I don't know if I should announce that publicly yet or not, but, uh, rumor has it, there probably will be a gymnasium within the confines of our city.
Fitness, fitness.
Fitness center.
Fitness center, yeah.
That's good news.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Couple of traffic light things, uh, at the last meeting. At the last meeting, Joe, as you were going out, you were, you wondered about the traffic light, and actually Joan was able to find a contact for, the intersection I'm talking about is, even though this isn't in town, it certainly affects our people. Out at Route 7 and Moncton Road, there actually has been lots of times, as Joe spoke about, where people seem to get stranded and the light just never turns, never turns red. They're trying to get across Route 7, and the light just stays there in red forever. And of course, finally, you say, "Listen, I gotta go across." And of course, they go across and they get picked up and get a ticket, you know, but it's really the light's fault. It's true. Anyway, what we, what we've uncovered is that from the east, the stop bar is set back a fair distance from the intersection. And the way that the system works, there is a lane detector there, and obviously, if you're coming from the east and you're going to go right on red, basically, if you come and stop and, and leave, by not sitting on the lane detector for more than six seconds, the light won't cycle. So in essence, if you stop, if you stop at the stop bar and you stay there for less, for six seconds or left, less, and turn right onto Route 7, you're fine. The thing doesn't cycle, it's right on red, it's good, okay? What happens is, is because the stop bar is so far back, some people get to the stop bar, and they're on the stop bar for four seconds, and they aren't going right. They're actually going straight, okay? So they're on the stop bar for four seconds, they proceed to Route 7, you know, they're edgy, all right, they want to get across the road. The, I can't, I never can say that a stop bar thinks. The stop bar senses that you must have turned right, all right, because you were only on the stop bar for four seconds. So it sensed that you turned right, and you didn't, and you're stuck, all right? So I've told the guy, "Well, I'm just telling you, I don't know what you can do. I mean, I understand what he's telling me is, but, but it's not working." So he said he would go back down and take a look at the sensitivities. So if you can just keep me posted, if anybody can keep me posted.
I spoke with you, I've been at a light twice, and I happened to come right up, I keep a stopwatch in my truck for other purposes. Both times I was coming from the west, and it was my...
Coming from the west, from the west, okay.
From the city side.
Okay.
Or from the...
Yeah, the city side.
And the light turned red, and I started the stopwatch, and it was about 40 seconds. So it might seem like two minutes, but it was 40 seconds.
Yeah.
Today, I noticed that there's a big piece of agricultural machinery going, coming from the city, crossing to the east.
Yeah.
And it did, must not, it must have straddled the stop bar or something, because it was, I didn't have my, I was in the car, so I didn't have my watch. But it seems to take a long time, so.
Okay.
I thought things had been fixed, because since I spoke with you, you know, the times that I've come to the light, it seems to change much more promptly.
Okay.
But except for this one situation where the first car was a big piece of agricultural equipment.
Yeah. Well, these numbers are on my desk. I don't know that, I spoke to him, you know, it was a few days ago, or a couple of days after you spoke, whenever Joan gave me the number, I got on the phone with him. So, anyway, I've got a number, you know, and obviously, there's, it's all electronics, they can fix it somehow. And if, and if the, if the stop bar is too far back, and they can actually, you can, you can, it's all based on a magnetic field, most everybody knows. So if the stop bar is too far back, and all you need to do is add, you just cut it and you add additional sensors there, you know. So, I mean, if people are getting stuck and get sick of it, you know, I mean, that is, here's a, here's a traffic light that's supposed to be providing safety, and basically, it's providing the opposite because of the sensor.
I'll relate to everybody else, is that I happened to be sitting at the light, and in one situation, I saw somebody from the east proceed through the intersection, someone from my side on the west turned left onto Route 7 while the light was still red, they were just in total waiting.
Yeah.
So there's people coming from both directions that went through the intersection.
The other thing on traffic lights, Greg Edwards is your appointee to the TAC, the Transportation Advisory Council or Commission, or whatever, whatever it's called. There's some money that they have available for planning study. This is planning, not engineering. And so he and I got our heads together about what are some planning projects that, what is a planning project that we could use in the city? And what we came up with was to do a feasibility of the intersection of Main Street and Pantan Road as it relates to a fully actuated, um, traffic signal there. And see, you know, certainly, when BF Goodrich gets out, and certainly in the morning when people are trying to get to work, particularly if the school buses are running, you know, it really clogs up in there, all right? And so there are certainly times of the day where it'd be good to have a fully actuated traffic signal. However, those types of facilities, they have to meet warrants. You know, you can't just, you don't just put one up because you think you need one. You actually have to do a, do a study, a traffic study, to make sure that it actually is warranted. You know, these things are expensive. You don't, you don't put them up just because it would be a little bit more convenient. You put them up because when people have to wait at an intersection too long, they start taking chances, and you end up with accidents. So, so anyway, Greg and I put, Greg did all the work, I just reviewed the thing, his credit. Anyway, that goes in front of the TAC, I think, on, on the 17th of this month. I can't remember if they got $18,000 total, or whether or not any project is, whether or not it's a maximum of 18 for the whole county, or projects can't be more than 18. But anyway, there's no local match, it's just some money that's available for them to do, do a feasibility study of that. So I just wanted to let you know that that's in. That's all I had, Mike.
While we're talking about traffic and lights and that sort of thing, earlier this year, I had asked for the council to go out and look around the town and see where we have some safety hazards. I know that, and nobody has come back to me with anything, but the least...
Christine Mambly one day.
The, the intersection where school dumps onto east, going west, that, got to do something there, it is hazardous. You get traffic coming up at a, not speeding, but at a fair enough rate that they can't stop, and you pull right out into them, and you can't see.
You're talking about on to green?
Right by Ziggy's building.
On to green, not on the east, on to green.
School going on to green.
Green, okay.
Going to the west. Whether you're going anyway, pulling up, going down, or going straight across, that is, it's bad. I've almost got nailed myself. So I don't know what we could do there. I'm not sure, taking one, I know that we're hurting for parking spaces, but I don't think taking one is going to help. I think you're going to have to go two.
Well, what I'm going to do, yeah, what I'm going to do, Mike, is back a long time ago, if you recall, the city received Class 1 paving money, and all of, all of, well, all of Route 22A and Green Street and Haven Road was, was totally resurfaced, which included, you know, handicap, handicap sidewalk at the intersections, and it was a very clearly designed parking plan. So I just need to go down to Public Works and take a look at it. I think what probably has happened is the city has deviated from that plan and start putting parking spaces where they really shouldn't be. So I just want to go back and, I want to go back and look, because it was fully engineered, and we should just follow it, and whatever it says. If we lose one, we, if it, if it, if it says parking, it's a stop here, because somebody's already engineered it. Like I say, I think that the crew, you know, and I'm not throwing them under the bus, but you know...
I'll be with Director T.
We get tugged, we get tugged from both directions, you know, you got, you know, we're supposed to be following this plan, and then you got people saying, "We need more parking," all right? So, you know, no matter what we do, it's going to be wrong. So, you know, what I want to do is just, let's get a hold of the professional plan, see what it says, and...
Sure.
And let's follow it.
Yep. And if we can undermine any, not undermine, if we can come up with any other parking spaces within the city, lots or whatever, let's see what we can do. Okay? That's it for you, sir?
Yep.
Okay. New business. Betsy Vick, request for waiver for penalty charges. Mel?
Yeah, A and B, it'd be my recommend, yeah, it'd be my recommendation that the city council deny the request. I certainly, I can tell you, I have included in my cover memo something to think about that would have to be on the March Town Meeting to change our billing cycle. But basically, you know, everybody gets the bill, and it clearly states what's on it, when items are due. And people who didn't pay on, on particular dates, you know, are subject to interest and penalty. Many people have paid their interest and penalty. So to me, at this point, to be considering, you know, giving a couple of people who have requested a waiver, I just don't think it's fair to other people that pay their penalty. Now, that's not to say that we shouldn't take a look at our, our billing, all right? I'm all for that, and if somebody reminds me prior to, prior to January, I'll come up with some verbiage whereby you, we would have four installments, with the last installment being due on May 15th. However, your taxes aren't subject to penalty until June 15th, because I do understand what they're saying, is that, you know, the one time they forget, it's the time when it's the 8% penalty. I understand that. You know, there was a time when we used to, there was a time when, when we used to have the time to call up people. We don't have that luxury any longer. It also, calling people probably isn't fair anyway, because we didn't call everybody, and so you start making decisions, and the minute that somebody thought that they used to get a phone call, so phone calls, maybe they used to work, probably wouldn't work in this day and age, but, so again, I would recommend that you, that the board deny both requests under, under 7A and B.
I'd ask for a motion for...
I'm going to recuse myself as Betsy Vick is my sister-in-law.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, nobody needs to... Mel's recommendation, recuse of requests.
Is that a second? Lowell? Further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Um, let's just recap on item number 7C. Right now, David and Randy, with the help of Mel...
I think Ziggy.
And, oops, and Ziggy?
Yep. You're on peddler's park usage, right? Peddler's park usage.
You, you guys own this, so come up, work something, work with Mel, get some verbiage.
Essentially, it's relatively simple. I mean, basically, what we're doing is, is we're drafting language that's going to support the decisions that the council has made.
Yep. And any other stipulations? And again, it's, we're not, may not be able to have a perfect situation, there may be some, may have to put some other alternative words in there to cover those cases.
We can have it ready by the next meeting.
Okay. Not the next meeting, the next meeting.
The next regular meeting.
Next regular meeting. Okay, sounds good. Thank you. Um, item number D is something, it's, it's something that I want to do or have done, and I've asked Christine, because everybody else is kind of on the busy side, I'm not sure if...
Christine doesn't have to do.
Well, she does. She does. She has lots to do. Her husband tells me about how busy she keeps him, so. He said that if I gave her something to do, that her, no, I can say that.
Michael, you're pressing it.
Only kidding, okay. Um, I want to look at our process for stifens. I want to see if I can get the carrot out there. As a rewarding type situation, I told Chris what I'd like to see is use a base pay where just being a member, you get the base pay. And then, based on performance, meaning attendance to these meetings, you get, either if you attend all, you get a percentage, but if you are, and there's a little leeway as far as if you miss one or two, you still could get all. But if you start missing two-thirds, half, or more, then you kind of get penalized for that. So we're, we're trying to make it in a positive mode, and we're looking at, I've told Chris to try to bump the fees up a little bit. Again, as little as we pay or would end up involving in this process, it's not going to address any issues as far as taxes. It would not have any impact. Mel and I have already talked about it. We're talking very little money, and we're trying to do this in a, in a positive manner. We don't do much for people for the amount of time that they put into providing the services for our community. It's the least we could do to thank them, so.
Yeah, Mike, on that, one of the things I wanted to get to Christine, and I, I lent this to somebody on this board.
I have. David's got it, he's going to get it to you.
All right, good.
We've already worked, and she's going to look at what other communities are paying, so that we know if we're in the window or if we're way out. Okay? Um, our next meeting, of course, is next Tuesday night, hearing, 7:00 PM. Our regular meeting is August 25th. We will get to you with a time, most likely it'll probably be 6:30. But we have to shuffle our regular meeting back a little bit, so it may probably start at 7:30 or, so depending, we need a lot more time. And so, we'll get that word out to you, all right? We've talked about the boats and the docks, and the great turnout that we're having this year, and hearing all sorts of praise about our downtown district and the businesses, and to see the bag after bag, those poor boaters have to lug bags. It's, they're using the shaws and the, and down the street. Talked to several people on how they go into the different stores and are spending their hard-earned money. Tickets for the Bear, I need you to try to push them, sales are slow. And again, this is at no cost, these, the bear, the tickets, the boat, thank you, Randy. The bottle of wine is donated from the city. It is at no cost to anybody, well, my wife and I, but it's no cost to the city. And every ounce of profit that we make off these ticket sales comes back to the city for recreation-type money, it'll be invested back into something very positive. So we need, need you to help push that.
Newsletter?
Thank you. I forgot to write that down. Newsletter should be printed by tomorrow and hit, we're hoping it'll be in mailboxes by Friday, Saturday at the latest. Another fine edition. Can't tell you everything that's in there. There's a bunch of interesting articles, and again, I thank my wife, God bless her, did an outstanding job. She's looking for articles for the next go-around, so if you've got something really interested, don't hesitate to drop her line, they have a tendency to fill fast. So, and we've even got one article that's fairly long, but interesting, so we're putting half in this one, and the other half of it will be in the December one we put out. Somebody was mentioning the camp for cancer, kids with cancer. There's a, just a little story here. There's a Bristol fireman who has terminal cancer. They, the fire department over there wanted to put a fundraising together. He heard about it and wouldn't allow them to do anything for him. They went ahead with a fundraising, and it was, they shaved their head, they raised Really something, so. Put your mind to it, in the right cause.
You're open now?
Huh? Shave my head? No. God made a few perfect heads, the rest he put hair on. So, I don't know what mine is. Okay, I'd ask for a adjournment.
I may make that one second.
We have Chris and all those in favor?
Aye.
Ziggy? Thank you very much, have an enjoyable evening.